Okay, we're gonna call the order, call the meeting to order, it's a good start, at six oh one P M. Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
We have consent agenda items tonight that include the minutes from the October sixth board meeting, general fund vouchers and purchasing card transactions, certified and co-curricular staffing recommendations, and a certified staff member retirement request as listed on the agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull out of the consent agenda items? Okay, I would look for a motion.
I can second.
Okay. So Fisher, Chapman. All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope, motion carries five zero. And then, as there is all the time, personnel, personnel items that do not require a vote. So next we have public comments. Okay, no one has registered. So we are just cruising through to the informational items. First being the Greater Dane County School Governance Consortium update. Chapman and Tarnitzer.
Okay, so I will go ahead and start, so last week, is that last week already? My days are all mixed up. Superintendent Tarnitzer, Tarnitzer and I attended the consortium meeting that was held in Madison. They have this beautiful school district building that I wasn't even aware of. And this is actually the first one that I had attended in person, I'd attended a couple virtually. So it was really great to kind of see how everything went down. So just to kind of give you a brief overview of what we talked about, we went over-
What?
Where was it held?
It was held at the like education building over on the south side, near Rimrock and by Badger Rock.
Oh, yeah.
And so it was a great experience, we had a lovely meal, which is always appreciated. But one thing we went over was our twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five political advocacy priorities. The top one being special education reimbursement. So just to kind of give everyone a brief review, we had all requested a hundred percent of special ed reimbursement, and during the biannual budget, we received thirty two point four percent, which unfortunately fell way below what we were hoping for. However, we are going to see projected increases of forty two percent for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, and then twenty, and then forty five percent for twenty twenty six to twenty twenty seven. Another thing that I think is really important to discuss is that, and I know we've talked about this a lot forever, maybe tuning in and isn't aware, state aid funding has not increased or has not changed since two thousand and nine, which is extremely unfortunate. So a couple of topics we went through as we broke into small groups. We talked about best practices in governance, the top one being fostering collaboration and trust between the school board and their superintendent, establishing clear goals and priorities, and developing and monitoring policies for consistent compliance. A couple of things they wanted to touch upon that really make boards truly effective are that we are data-driven, data-savvy, and reflective, and really asking key questions like, what stories do we want to learn, what data are we missing? We went through best practices in teaching and learning, emphasizing continuous improvement and strengthening instructional practices. And then we really discussed communication and engagement practices. And so at the table that Erin and I were at, we had the superintendent from Madison there, we had the superintendents from Verona, Oregon, Erin obviously, and then we had a couple of board members from the Oregon School District and myself. So we kind of went around the table and just talked about various aspects that each district did in terms of communication strategies. And so in various districts that are quite a bit larger than ours, they actually have a communications director, which kind of spearheads everything, so I'm just gonna go over a couple of examples. Mount Horeb uses Smore for post-board meeting cert digest surveys and other strategic plan updates. Verona does Board of Education recaps, they do two to three minute videos. And then they also do bi-monthly podcasts and has a very cute name, In Loop with the Soup, which I thought was pretty funny. And another thing we talked about was social media platforms. So I know Facebook, we tend to do a lot with, and then on Instagram, we do a lot with our athletics in our school district. But Verona really talked about how they use Instagram to reach the demographic of thirty five plus, since Instagram tends to target that age group more so than Facebook. They really use a lot of A I data-driven analysis. And then Middleton actually does host community breakfasts as a way of reaching their residents, specifically those who don't have kids in the district, which I thought was really cool. So just kind of the key takeaways from that, school districts are continuing to advocate for adequate funding, emphasizing data-informed governance, and really building transparent communication strategies that foster trust, clarity, and continuous improvement. So those were all my notes from the meeting. Erin, would you like to add anything that I missed? Because you took a bunch of notes too, so.
Yeah, it was a good time, I think the collaboration was pretty powerful. We, we were at a really great table, so we were pretty well stacked. And that was helpful. One of the things that I think we did discuss briefly at the end was about where do we want to focus our political advocacy moving forward? And tax transparency was a conversation that we talked about. Making sure people understand their tax bill and why it looks like it does, and bringing it back to the fact that the state has not indexed the amount of aid provided to, to the revenue cap. That was part of the conversation, but then the more important part, I think for me, was a reminder that just because you didn't get exactly what you asked for, doesn't mean you stop asking for it. So there was progress with special ed, but don't give up on that. Continue with a consistent message, and continue with a message that unites the state. That the legislature is less concerned what Dane County school districts think and more concerned what districts across the state are thinking. Because the vast majority of districts across the state are rural and not urban or suburban. So that was helpful. I think the, the best practices for effective school boards, reviewing three of those eight that, that kind of come through that lighthouse study that you may have heard of was, was helpful. And I think just talking about board governance was really interesting. We're fairly unique, having an amazing board, but also a five-person board. And so that provides us some opportunities that I think others don't. But including data at every meeting, that was a big focus. Yeah, so it was definitely a really robust conversation and well facilitated.
Awesome, thank you both.
You said Mount Horeb was there?
Yep, so at our table we had, oh, we also had Belleville and New Glarus.
But if Mount Horeb does have a communications director, if there are some.
Yes.
And Belleville would be smaller, obviously.
Does Belleville have a director?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm less versed on Belleville. Mount Horeb does. She's very good.
And I would love to give a shout out to our social media and communications manager, Angie. You do a wonderful job.
Shout out.
Thank you. Yeah, those are always good meetings, I feel like.
Yes, it was very valuable. I think the, the way they structured it led to more conversation than in previous meetings and more collaborative sharing of ideas.
I think that's what I took the most out of it, was being able to chat just with other school board members, to see what works for them, what their struggles are, and just to bond that way. I would love to see more of those events take place where like school board member meet and greets, that kind of thing. Because you know what we, you know, deal with, for lack of a better word, in McFarland, you know, other schools might have something similar that we can, you know, chat about, work through.
Yeah, I think it's interesting that a couple of the things that you two touched on are the same as what I heard in the, the Wasby Regional Meeting.
And that makes a lot of sense.
You know, but it's two different things, but they're like, okay, we have to, we have to focus on the same thing, so that's cool.
Okay.
Did Dr. Gauthier, was he a pretty active participant?
Yeah, he was at our table.
He was at our table, yeah.
And just from an overall, like, from a personality perspective, he's, he's very engaging and he brings a lot to the table, but he does it in a very humble way, which I really appreciate.
That's nice.
And he's very tall.
He's a tall human, yes, and he-
I used to watch his father play softball in Madison.
Yeah, and he was one of the presenters, he presented part of the content.
Sure.
As well regarding the political advocacy.
What a job that's gotta be.
Oh, and just a reminder, John Nolan Drive will be down to one lane for the next two years.
Two years.
We did talk about that in our meeting. One lane each way, because they're building this new water feature that's supposed to be amazing. So just remember that after going downtown. For the next two years.
Everybody will forget it at least once and find themselves in a parking lot with a lake view.
Well, there are worse views.
That could be worse, yes.
All right, anything else on that? Thank you both for going and reporting back for us. Okay, district administrators report.
Excellent, lots to share going around here in the district. Get to see some of our fine students from the primary school out and about here, sharing a writing project out in nature, right? Some green time as they share their writings, so congrats to our young authors for sharing their stories there. Our next crew of safety patrol, you've seen these fine people, the first crew, this is the second crew here in their first week of duty, so it's really popular. It's the thing to do, is to be in- I don't know. I don't know how they rotate or-
Joey did that, I think it was one year.
It's a whole school year, but they take shifts, they rotate throughout. They do a great job, they've kept me safe many times. Here we have our seventh grade science who are doing some learning outdoors as well, so looking at ecosystems here. Love that, we are so fortunate to have such a beautiful area for them to do it in. So thanks to our teachers for connecting them with the outdoors. Of course, you know about Banner Day at the middle school and the Wacky Olympics, just a couple of shots here, always a fun event. Fun competition. It is competitive, but collaboratively competitive. So if you ever get a chance to, to see it in person, it is something. When you stand there and watch what everybody's doing, it's bizarre. Definitely wacky, but the Banner Day is always fun, it really brings together their advisories. Here you have the homecoming court, homecoming was wonderful, I heard people had a great, great time, so congrats to the court. Some of you might have seen him in the parade as well. The Indigenous Studies class went to the UW campus and did the, did a tour there, a guided tour, so that was pretty powerful from what I understand. UW has done a great job providing that history to our students and to other students. This is just a couple shots from Dr. Moore's presentation, her keynote, and then she led the cohort through some professional development for the first of four times this year. And really focused on what inclusion means, that it's more than just people being present in spaces, but being able to be their authentic selves, cross-race, class, sexual orientation, gender, ability. So that was very powerful, well-received. She has a unique blend as a, as a former special ed teacher of humor and practicality, and also vulnerability and curiosity that I think was pretty powerful.
That's a good combination.
Yeah, right? I love this, school lunch week, our, our social media manager found some great pictures.
That's a great shot.
Very enthusiastic.
And look how much lettuce is on those.
I love my greens.
That is right. But I think those, those stats are pretty great for last year, fifty-five thousand breakfasts and a hundred and seventy-six thousand lunches. So some amazing meals. Whenever I get around to the schools and I see a meeting hot lunch, I always remind them, thank you for feeding your brain. Because you can't learn unless you feed your brain. All right, those are our pictures. In other news, I want to thank our crisis response teams, but especially Lauren Arango and Angie Brunette, who led our crisis response teams through some activities. So about this time every year, we get together as a group and do some tabletops. So some scenarios are presented to our, it's pretty much building administrative teams and student services. And then we discuss, what would you do if, and then some scenario. And in our case, ours continued to evolve, they kept adding things that were happening.
I suppose that's realistic.
I won't share the scenarios with you, they won't warm your heart, but it's a pretty intense situation, so we hope we never have to deal with. So it's very valuable, lot, lot of lessons learned, and we shared out between buildings. We had, we had one common scenario to start, and then we broke into, the buildings had different scenarios based on the developmentally. So really valuable. I want to thank our social workers, we had the McFarland Schools Equity Collective meeting met focused on financial needs of our students and families. And our social workers completed some documentation to help us understand the needs that they, as they see it. And then two of them were actually able to attend the meeting and learn directly from the parents that were in attendance. Really, really interesting and valuable things that came out of that, just about both what the needs are and then what are the barriers to accessing those supports in our schools. So we have some action steps moving forward about simplifying the process for getting support, ensuring privacy and confidentiality, and just kind of removing some of those barriers related to stigma for asking for help. Very powerful. We also, I wasn't able to attend, I had the opportunity to meet with many other people, but we did have the author came, I know I previewed that with you at a previous meeting, but we had an author come and speak to our K five levels. And from what I heard, it went really well, but I unfortunately wasn't able to be there. But thank you to the P T O for buying books for our kids as part of that process, for our teachers to read to kids, and our literacy coordinators and library and media staff for organizing that. We also have participated in Wheel or Walk to School as part of a Dane County project with Dane County Safe Routes School Team and the Wisconsin Bike Federation. So primarily through our P E staff, just organizing and promoting kids to walk and bike to school versus getting dropped off at the front door. So that was good. Some things coming up, we have, of course, fall conferences, it's a conference season at really all of our, our buildings. Tomorrow at nine thirty, they will be cutting the ribbon at the Spartan Fuel Cafe. So it used to be the school store attached to the cafeteria here at the middle school. And it's a neat collaboration between our business and marketing team and our special education department that serve beverages to students during the, the like snack break time, so. So congrats to them, those students are doing a great job. And then this week, we also, on Wednesday is Unity Day, and that's a day where we really talk about the uni, unifying all of us to symbolize acceptance, conclusion, and belonging. So it's a day to wear orange, if you're so inclined. We have staff development on Thursday, and then Friday is a release day. So our teachers, it's a conference release day, so because they have conferences during the evening, then they have a day to recoup. And then there's something coming up on October thirty first, Halloween. So making sure everybody has a great time, gets out and has fun. President Fessler and I had the opportunity to participate in trunk or treat
We did.
on Saturday and saw eight thousand children, many of them dressed as minions.
Is that the costume of the year?
It seemed to be, was that the, what do you think is the most common costume?
Probably minions, but those, those were also often adults, there were definitely adult minions. K-pop Demon Hunters were popular.
I still don't understand that.
I don't know, I haven't watched the movie yet.
I'd still look for a amount of Harry Potters.
That's true, Spiderman, lots of Spiderman. Um, yeah, what other ones were there?
A lot of, a lot of, now that I think about it, there were a lot of students with their, their soccer jerseys.
Yes, I think there was a soccer tournament happening.
Yeah, I think that was very convenient, they were soccer players.
One, they also had creative candy carrying things. There was a winter hat. There was pockets. And now they have like fun ones that are on a stick, it's like a hand, and then you just put the candy in the hand and it falls in a bag. It was an exciting day.
It was really fun, I was really tired, I don't know, I mean, we haven't connected after. Were you, because I couldn't believe how tired I was.
So tired.
My smile muscles were sore.
So I got to put Vaseline on your teeth.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true. Well, and it was hot in the sun.
It was legit hot, yeah, we had melted chocolate.
We did, we did.
We had to rotate our chocolate.
Yep.
That's smart though.
Kids, kids got kind of picky at the end, they were like, is it squishy?
Yeah, they would test them, they would pinch them to see if they were squishy or not.
I know, I was like, don't waste the candy, it's good.
Um, purple nerds, most popular candy.
Yes, nerds are back. Almond Joys, no one will be surprised, were the least favorite.
Really? I love those, those in baby roots.
Well, you can have all the leftovers.
Yeah, but it was really fun, there were so many businesses participated and really creative and clever, I didn't hear who won.
Uh, Dane Dental did.
Oh, okay.
I saw the ranking.
Yeah, I don't think it's the first time.
No, I think they won last year too.
We even had one of our sports teams there with a trunk.
Yes.
So that was cool, boys volleyball, yeah, it was cool, it was clever too, like hitting a-
Some game, yeah.
I don't know.
Sort of thing with volleyballs.
That would make sense.
We're apparently still tired.
I know, it was, it was, it was fun, it was fun.
That was gonna be my, that was gonna be my recognition and gratitude for the P T O for putting it on and all the people who organized it, because it's, it was also clear that lots of people from the community come and not just like McFarland kids.
Yes.
So, yeah, good opportunity.
They have, and they have a silent auction as part of it, so a lot of businesses donated a basket. It was interesting, someone came up to us, and, because we had school funding information, what, what Megan said were adult treats. Learn about your school board and school funding. And someone came up to us, is like, I think they felt like they were catching us on the spot and said, well, yeah, did you figure out what to do because you didn't have any of your fund balance? Nope, that's not us.
Yeah, we just kind of looked at each other and were like, nope, that's, that's not us.
It was fun, they were being playful, they were being playful with us.
Yes, they were.
The grand opening at the, the new ice arena?
Yeah.
Over there, I would assume you probably have already talked about it, but I was over there and just really impressed.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah, that is really, really nice. And that was very well attended.
Yeah, you get our community events going and there.
It was a beautiful day.
Yeah, that helps.
I think the thing about the ice arena too was how thoughtful they were with everything. The, the design, they were very thoughtful.
Yes, it includes a lot more community opportunities now with their, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I got, anybody else have anything else?
Well, since we didn't have a student report, I will give a shout out to the football team.
Yeah.
They had a big win against Edgerton last Friday, which solidified them in the first round of playoffs this Friday against Whitnall High School.
Good shout out, that's a good shout out.
You want to go to Whitnall High School?
It's supposed to be decent.
The high school?
No, no, no.
The game?
The weather.
The weather, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But it will be televised, so I'm sure somebody will post a link on the Book of Face. Oh, and Ackley, Coach Ackley celebrated his hundredth win with that win, so that is exciting.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a good one, that is a big night.
Big night for the A D.
Congrats.
It's really nice.
All right. Okay, anything else? All right, now let's move on to our action items. All right, so I believe the first one is our budget changes. Action on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget changes. Do you have any background you want to share, anyone? Um, just, I was gonna check for background first, there's none, it was in our packets.
To share?
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, it's kind of the annual thing.
Thing, yeah.
I mean, I can provide some-
You don't have to.
I know, you can provide some insights.
All right, and bring us some insights.
It is an annual event prior to our annual meeting, which is kind of cool, that we're able to do this. You know, the big changes that our taxes are going up a bit, about seventy thousand compared to where we had posted them and estimated them since basically July one. That's because state aid's going down more than what July one aid estimate from D P I had noted. And about the only positive news maybe is that our independent charter expenses of two hundred and sixty-three thousand is dropping to two hundred and thirty thousand. And those are funds that we tax our taxpayers for, and then it is sent to the independent charter schools, the other school districts that our state runs. So those would be my update.
Okay, thank you.
Well said, yeah, so a reminder, we, you know, do the, the update, or we do the, the, the budget and that's adopted, and then that's based on those estimates from state aids.
Yep, and then state aid comes in, what, the first, October first, right?
We'll have other changes throughout the year as well, because these are the critical ones for the annual meeting.
Yep, we want to have it hot off the press for you. Yep, we want to have it hot off the press for you.
Which is following this meeting, just in case anyone missed it. All right, so I would look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the budget changes for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year as recommended by administration.
All right, do I have a second? All right, we've got the H's for this one. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, five-zero. All right, next, um, action on the approval of the WIAA Girls Wrestling Cooperative Team sponsorship.
So this is just every two years, uh, bring this forward, we're continuing our cooperative agreement both for girls and boys wrestling with the Monona Grove School District, it's been a great partnership, so we do bring this forward to the board for approval every two years. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, so we'll do, um, we'll have two mo- two separate motions, one for each team. So I would look for, um, a motion for the girls wrestling team first. Go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve sponsorship of the WIAA Girls Wrestling Cooperative Team for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, and twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight school years as recommended by administration.
All right, thank you. Any discussion?
How many kids do we, anybody know how many kids McFarland has?
Two.
Two.
Mm-hmm.
For the girls.
For the girls.
For the girls, yep.
And then there's eleven, I believe, for the boys.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful for these co- those, these co-ops, 'cause it's, gives more opportunity to students. Yep, so.
That's what it is.
All right, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, five-zero. I would look for a motion for the boys team now.
I approve sponsorship of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-two boys wrestling cooperative team for the two-thousand-and-twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school years as recommended by administration.
I can second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, five-zero. And then the last one is, um, the WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin are requesting approval of the recommended student transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement.
I'll move to approve the, uh, WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin's recommended student transfers back to their residents, resident districts due to a lack of engagement.
I'll second.
All right. Got the H's again. I don't know why I find that so amusing, but I do. All right, um, any discussion?
Well, in the spirit of Tom Mooney, I will say, uh, this list is, you know, fairly short, and obviously we will see an increase as the year continues. Um, we did have one first grader, uh, one fourth grader, two fifth graders, and then it moved into the high school ages. Um, so it's nice to see that those younger grades, uh, didn't have as many students. Um, so, that's what I got.
Thanks, I was gonna do the same thing, so thank you for doing it. Um, it is, it, uh, it's sad to see that there's already so many students not engaging, you know, probably weren't engaging from the very beginning, I'm guessing based on the time of year, but I don't know that for sure. Um, but I appreciate WEVA's efforts to-
The only thing I would say about that is, in some ways, when they're younger, this is obviously their first experience with virtual education. So to me, I guess I'm not as concerned about that, I guess I'm more concerned when you have a kid that's been involved or enrolled, they're like the junior senior year. And, uh, again, it depends probably on their own personal history, how long they've been involved with it all. I know I, I attended the, uh, Four Lakes, uh, which is the, the kind of the, the month of the meeting. And, you know, it's just something they're very, very concerned about and they keep working on, and they're doing the best they can, so, anyway.
Well, when there's, when there's such a degree of parental-
Involvement?
Involvement.
Yeah.
You never, you know, you'd never quite know, ah, is it really the, the youngster's fault or, you know, maybe he's not getting the help he needs. But Insight School of Wisconsin, I think that's a bad term, is, you know, last resort. That's sort of what it is with, you know, they, they're, they are trying, historically, as, as the enrollment of WEVA has increased, I think the numbers on that list have decreased.
But I do think it's important to also acknowledge that, you know, virtuals, learning isn't for everybody.
True.
So sometimes they find out, it's just be nice if they actually withdrew instead of-
Right.
Disappearing.
Right, right, 'cause it could be a, the lack of engagement could be a, for a multitude of reasons, yeah, that's a good point, Erin.
They do.
Such a good job.
True, true. Dr. Cutler's really led the, led the way on that. All right, um, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five-zero. And just before I look for the action on the last item, just a reminder that we have our annual meeting here at seven, and I'm looking forward to the droves of people who are gonna join us.
It's gonna be a party.
You never know.
It's true, you never know.
I think this is my sixteenth, and I don't think we've ever had more than like three or four.
Well, we'll see.
Count yourselves, so some ten.
That's true.
This is true.
We are electors.
We had ten last year, I think.
That's true, all right, amazing. All right, so I would look for a motion on the last action item. Oh. Okay, um, what are you moving to do?
What's your motion? To adjourn.
Since I did that. To adjourn. Yeah. Yep, okay, so Fisher's moving to adjourn. Oh, Howard stole it from Hughie, wow!
It's gonna be a reckless place from here on out.
Oh, snap, all right, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are adjourned at six-thirty-seven.
Great job.
Wow, we came in, uh, twelve minutes.